Well, she's still eating.
I just want to call.
You got the one over there, let's go. You got people been sitting here a while. Catch up.
All right, council will reconvene now, and the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I do want to call attention to a request for a closed meeting from a city manager to discuss a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry at the 100th Rock of Church Avenue Southeast, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Pursue intersection 2.2-3711, Code of Virginia as amended. All right, I need a motion.
So move.
Madam clerk, please call.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved, thank you. All right, we're going to move now to our regular agenda item, which is public hearings. We have none. Item number six is petitions and communications. We have none. Reports of the city offices and comments of a city manager. And I now call on our city manager for the briefings that he has.
Thank you, Mayor Council. We have one briefing today that has two parts. We are, of course, beginning publicly officially, I guess, our FY25 budget process. Of course, you all started that back in November with your budget planning retreat. But as you know, in January, we begin the monthly budget briefings as we move toward an April presentation of the budget. And we always start with the real estate assessment. It is one of the first steps in the process that we have for budgeting. And of course, one of the reasons for that is it is one of the most significant sources of revenue that we use to deliver city services. And so we will be doing that, that as part of this briefing. Casey will be coming up here in just a second to do that. We are also adding this year, really expanding on what we shared with you all at the budget planning retreat around revenues. So the real estate and the real estate assessment is one step in that process. And then, of course, again, that generates revenue coming from the real estate taxes that we use for services. But that in and of itself, even as significant it is, is only one part of the revenues that we use. And you'll remember at the retreat, we shared with you kind of our preliminary projections about what all of those revenue sources look like they may bring in to deliver city services, schools and other, school services and other kinds of things. So we're going, the second half of the briefing will actually cover that piece, and Jason will be leading you all through that as he did at the, at the retreat with that. And obviously, we always start with the revenues because that tells us what we have available to actually address the priorities that you have established through your retreats, as well as be able to pay the bills for all the services. So it's necessary for me to remind you, and I'll probably do this at every single one of our briefings, of what our top line expenditures are based off of the priorities that you all have established. Always at the top of that list, of course, are our contractual obligations. We have contracts that we are responsible for that in many instances have increases built into them. So obviously, those will be at the top of that list of commitments. We have formula-driven commitments. I mentioned schools, for example. So as revenue goes up, so does our commitment to schools, as an example. So that is a top line expenditure commitment. And then, as you all know, we're continuing our work on compensation. And so this will be the third or fourth year that we continue to try to address compensation for our workforce. So that will be also at the top line associated with that. And then, of course, unfortunately new this year are the inflationary pressures that we're confronted with. Of course, the most notable, we've talked about recently, dealing with the Main Street Bridge. But essentially, everything that we buy in order to deliver services in the community has gone up significantly in cost. And so those are the top line expenditures, and of course, we, it's important for us to keep those in mind as we talk, even as we talk about revenues. And even as we talk about, thankfully, revenue's growing. It is, as we shared with you at the retreat, just those top line expenditures. And that's not even getting into new things. That's not getting into new services, expansions of existing services, all of the outside funding agencies that are seeking additional funding. Just those top line expenditures that I mentioned already outpace what we anticipate the revenue increases to be. And so that's our challenge over the next several months is to craft a budget that we bring to you all that responds to those priorities within the framework or the boundaries of the revenues that we anticipate being available. So with that, I'm going to ask Casey to come up so that he can start on the real estate piece. What we will do, if you can hold questions, this is a fairly short presentation, you'll hold questions. We will pause there so you can ask Casey any questions about real estate before we move into the revenue discussion with Jason. Thank you. This is, by the way, this is the first time in how many years you're not seeing Susan actually deliver this, this press? No pressures.
She's watching online. She's going to critique me after this. She's going to send me texts. She's going to light into me if I don't do a good job and make her proud. But we miss her, and so we're looking forward to making her proud. And I want to work with this just a little bit because I've never done this, so be patient with me. Okay, I'm good.
I'm tough.
No critics. Happy New Year. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and Honorable Members of Roanoke City Council, I'm here to provide you with the state of Roanoke City's real estate market relative to assessments. Here today representing, representing our amazing staff is Deputy Director Cookie Hazen and Supervising Appraiser Angela Arnold. I would also like to add a special thank you to former Director Susan Lauer, who has been very helpful in us, with us the last couple of months, just making sure we had the resources that we need and continue to support our staff. So I know she's watching, I'd like to thank her. And now I'd like to brief, like to brief you on general reassessment for fiscal year 2425. All right. Projected reassessment increases of the, is 9.34%. We're projecting new construction increase by .64% with a projected total increase of 9.98%. The breakdown is as follows. Single family will increase by 12%. Multi-family will increase by 17.92%. And commercial will add four point, increase by 4.12%. Assessment history by fiscal year. If you look at this chart here, if you look at, what we're going to do is look at 2023 and 2024 for total assessment. We, total assessment 2023, 2024 is 9.9%. We're projecting 2024 and 2025 at 9.98%. If you look at residential, residential includes multifamily. We, we ended up with 12.82% in 2023, 2024, and we're projecting 12.83% in 2024, 2025. And commercially, we, we ended up with 4.3, 4.35% in 2023 and 2024, and we're projecting 4.12% in 2024, 2025. New construction, new construction history by fiscal year. In 2022 and 2023, we ended new construction the fiscal year with $45,703,000. We're projecting $62,111,700 in 2023 and 2024 on an increase of approximately 35%. Residential median sale price and volume of sales. Sales prices or median sale price is up this year by 6.7%, while volume is down 26%. Wouldn't, I wouldn't be too alarmed by that. If you go back to 2018 and 2019, we typically averaged about 1,100 valid sales then, and now we're back to what I consider pre-pandemic levels at 1,000. And we're on the uptick there as well. Average multifamily sale price per unit. The multifamily's broken up into two segments. You have the converted houses and duplexes, and we also have apartments. If you look at converted houses and duplexes, we're holding per unit at $94,000 per unit for 2022 and 2023, and we're up 8.8% on apartment sales per unit from $79,000 to $86,000 per unit. So, as quickly as that was, in summary, residential assessed values showing overall increase of 12%. Multifamily assessed values increased by 17.9%. Commercial properties showing overall increase in assessed values by 4.1%. And let me indulge me for a second, let me give you some of the highlights of commercial because that's not really incorporated into this. But just some of the highlights of commercial this year. Hotels are up 7.8%. Restaurants are up 8.4%. Downtown and Central Business District is up 4.2%, and industrial properties are up 6.9%. Oh, I'm sorry. Total assessment change is projected at 9.98%. In 2023, we sent out approximately 40,000 notices. We had 344 appeals to our office, and then we had 58 appeals to the Board of Equalization. This year, our deadline for appeals is February 2nd. If taxpayers are not happy with our results, they can always appeal to the Board of Equalization. And if they're unhappy with the Board of Equalization, they can always file suit in Circuit Court. You can get your appeal applications online, of course, at www.roanokeva.gov, and you want to go to the Real Estate Valuation section, and it'll be under Appeal and Board, and Board of Equalization. Also, you can go to your local fire station or library and pick up forms, and we do have a center, we do have appeals downstairs in the lobby when you come in the door. So you can actually pick them up in the lobby of the municipal building. Tax relief programs, citizen-specific, we have the elderly tax freeze, the disability tax free relief program, and the veterans' tax relief program. And then, of course, real estate property specific, we have the rehab program, the land use program, solar energy abatement, and energy efficiency programs. And those applications for the real estate-related programs, you can get in our office, and the individual-related programs are in the Commissioner of Revenues office. So you want to talk to Ryan about that. Ryan LaFell.
Thank you, Casey. Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Something I go over every year, but years pass, it didn't matter too much to me. I mean, I hear it, just to advise others. But this elderly tax freeze, what are the requirements to qualify for?
Yes, sir. And if you don't mind, I'm going to read that so I don't mess it up. Is that okay? Okay. All right. The property must be the principal residence. The elderly homeowner applicant must be 65 years or older. Disabled homeowner applicants must be 100% permanently and totally disabled. And if you're less than 65 years or older, you must submit a copy of the disability certificate. Annual combined gross income of, between husband, wife, and any relatives living in the house is no more than $42,000. And a combined net worth of husband, wife, or any relatives living in the house may not exceed $160,000. And the deadline for filing is June 30th.
And if I remember, I think we made some.
Is that same deadline? I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I think we made some adjustments on those parameters last year.
I was going to say, I was going to ask you, thank you, Bob. Yes, I wanted to say 47?
Is it 47,000?
Forty-five?
Yeah, we'll have to go back.
Forty-five?
We'll have to go back and look. I don't recall, but there were some adjustments made on that.
Yeah, because it goes into effect this year.
Okay, is it? Okay.
Yes.
Well, this is from last, okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get that amended and get that out there.
Yes. Thank you.
So, so those dates would be applicable, Ms. Bratton, for disability tax release, the veterans' tax release, the deadline to apply would be the same for all three of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that program is run through the Commissioner of Revenues office.
The, which, the, all of them?
Yeah, the, well, the first three. Yeah.
The first three, yeah, right, okay.
The elderly tax freeze, disability tax relief, veterans. Yes, ma'am.
And Mary, I did want to kind of pick up on something that Casey said. First, I want to thank Casey and his staff for the work that they've done. Casey hasn't missed a beat from taking over with Susan, so certainly want to thank them for that. I, I want to highlight that, you know, part of what, what their obligation is, is they're trying, they're obligated to identify as close, as practical within 90, 95% of what the market value is of all of the property in the city of Roanoke. And that is no small task in doing so, and I think they do very effectively that work. And I know, you know, we, obviously, we do this in large part, of course, to identify the, the way in which we secure revenue to provide police and fire and a whole host of other services with this. But I did want to note, because it was at the very beginning, and it's a significant milestone, that for the first time in the city's history, the total value of property in the city is over $10 billion. That is a very good indicator of the strength of our local economy, and that it has continued to grow. I don't think it's missed, it hasn't missed growth all through COVID. And so that is the, the first time that that value has surpassed that, which I know no one likes to see values increase because they all know that ultimately means their tax bill's going up. But the flip side of that is, it's showing how much the values of our homes, of our businesses, of our industry all continue to increase in, in value, which is, again, when you pay that tax bill, it may not seem like, but it's actually a really good thing because there are communities in this country, of course, where that is not happening, where property values have stagnated, stagnated or declining. And so this is a very good indicator of the strength and the resiliency of our, of our local economy. And I just wanted to note that, that $10 billion is a significant number for the first time to, to be able to cross that threshold. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Bratton, thank you. It's always a good presentation. I hope Susan is proud of you.
If she's not, let us know.
But I am. One of the things that I think is important for the public to know is, you know, you talk about our, our median sales price has gone up, but we have fewer homes being sold than we have in the past couple of years. People are wondering why their values are going up so much. Is there something going on in the market that the public should know about that kind of shows why these are going up while we have sales going down?
Yeah, well, inventory is down throughout the region. I mean, you're going to see the sale, the volume is down throughout the entire region. So that's not unheard of. And prices go up, there are price pressures there based on, you know, just there not being enough demand. I mean, the demand is still there, and that's, that's buttress in your prices. So with demand still present and really not a lot of inventory, that, that's going to stabilize your prices at a higher rate, and you're going to see them continue to increase.
Thank you.
What's moving on? Thank you. My question for you, Mr. Bratton, is I'm looking at your 2425 real estate assessment projections, and I see where you mentioned, you know, the percentage and the changes from the reassessment, which was the 9.3. And the new construction is six, I mean, what's that, 64, 64 tenths percent? What is it we need to be doing to try to get new construction to help balance out the, the real estate? When you look at, even down to the commercial side?
Sure.
When we are looking at where the money comes in at? I'm not seeing that even in your included, which your change includes the new construction, even when I look at the commercial.
Yes.
I've had people always say they want to see those long, tall cranes up in the air.
Yes.
Showing that something is being done similar to what, you know, over at Corelli, for instance. How do we, what is, we should be doing that we are not doing per se?
Well, you know.
Was it just the economy?
Well, I think that what you're seeing too, and I say it's, it's not really, what we're looking at right now is, for example, we have three subdivisions in the city of Roanoke right now. Kingswalk, Mountain Brook, Mountain Brook, oh my goodness, here we go. Have it right here. Mountain Brook Estates, and we have Wilt. Among those, we're projecting over 100 properties over the next couple of years to come online. The average price, the average, the median price is between 450,000 to 850,000. Those sort of subdivisions are coming online, those sort of subdivisions are coming online and showing that our city is in a pretty good position to take advantage of those. Your single greatest opportunity for growth is through, you know, new, new, new construction. We also have the 768-unit apartment building coming online down 460.
Yeah.
You have an expansion of 188, 88 units at Glade Creek. So when you start to see that happen, it shows that there's an attractiveness to your, your market. I think you just continue to do what we doing, you know, continue to be, you know, provide great customer service, good intel. I think one of the things our office is committed to do is supporting, you know, everyone and provide, you know, digging into our data and providing good intel to support the agenda of growing this city. So I think the best, the single greatest opportunity that we have is through new construction to expand the tax base. And I think our neighbors, once you talk with them, they're doing the same thing.
Yeah. So that percentage, what you have there for 2024, 25 for the proposed assessment, that includes those new apartments that we were just talking about that was approved? Is that in tune with the?
No, that, that projection is based on what we're going to close between now and July 1.
Okay, so that would be coming around.
That'll be coming, so that's a cycle.
So you see a percentage going up.
Yes. And every year, this projection will provide you what's going to be closed in, in the fiscal year.
Okay.
So it's between quarter one and quarter two, quarter three and quarter four, and it ends up in July.
And if I, if I may, on that item, also just to kind of, sort of recognize some of the work that you all have already done, that actually helps with that. So a couple of years ago, you supported a code movement in our, in our zoning code, which actually allows what were apartment buildings, I mean apartment, hotel buildings, for example, to be converted into multifamily without having to go through a rezoning. That's what took place in the Sheraton property. So that was an action that you all took that enabled additional work to, to happen in the new development piece of it. The, the Riverdale project is another example for redevelopment. And, and then, I'll, I'll be controversial here for a second. This is where rezonings come in. I mean, this is where you actually take the action necessary to zone new parts of our city for development is where development takes place. So it's actually kind of all of the above. Figuring out a way to take under-producing buildings, convert them to better, more valuable uses, like the apartments, the hotel to the apartments, take areas that are blighted or otherwise have been kind of left alone, like Riverdale, and redevelop those, and open up new areas for development. Those subdivisions that Casey mentioned had previously been greenfields. Those, those were areas that are small wooded plots or old farms in our community. So all three of those efforts are necessary in order for us to generate new development. And to your point, it's spot on, is the more new construction we get, the less pressure there is on the existing residences in being able to provide taxes for the services that we require. So it's, it's critical that our economic development efforts continue to promote new development alongside the continued value increases that our current residents and businesses are experiencing.
Now, thank you for that. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I just had a follow-up question. Casey, I noticed that when we talked about commercial, there was growth in a lot of things, but I didn't hear anything about office. I just wanted to know if that's a place that we can maybe do something in the future to try and help that area.
Offices, offer, the office market is tough around the country. I mean, it's just, it's just not, right now, you, the fundamentals are not ripe for investment. I mean, if you know that, if you talk to, you know, the banks, the banks are not really supporting office construction right now. In certain areas of the country, you have saturation, and ours, we don't necessarily have that. But what we have is, we have a static mar, static market where there's a lot of competition. And that competition tends to lend itself towards smaller projects. I mean, and so you're starting to see some things happen there in the, in the office market that are, you know, they're transitioning, but right now, it's just the fundamentals don't help. You know, they're not, they're not really, banks are not lending money for office right now. So that's one of the things you see it play itself out in our market too.
Would that be an opportunity to kind of do like with the hotels where if there's office space that they could convert to residential more easily or something like that?
And you, and you have that in, for example, in downtown in our zoning that we have can accommodate that by right. That's why we actually had a lot of the older buildings converted. What you run into with a lot of those really becomes more building design. So many of the office, particularly new office buildings were built in a way that they were single purpose, unlike, ironically, unlike the older buildings that we've seen converted, who can actually convert those pretty readily into, into residential. But yes, your zoning actually has already accommodated that conversion where, where from a market standpoint, it makes, it makes sense with it. We are, we've actually had some conversations recently with the Economic Development Department about things that we've never had to do before, which is jointly marketing vacant office properties with realtors in the community. You know, usually, you're trying to elevate industrial property and get that word out, and we still are. But for the first time, we're actually being asked and are working on it to partner with vacant office buildings to try to actually get more awareness out in the region and elsewhere of the spaces that we have available in it, because the market right now really isn't very favorable for those uses.
Well, one of the things I would say beyond zoning is, I'm just thinking out loud here, is maybe we need to look at what are some other incentives that we can give as a city, whether that's tax abatements and all that, to help with those conversions? Because I know a lot of these office buildings weren't made to have light in every room like you're supposed to have in apartments and stuff like that, and it's costly. So that might be something for us to look at.
Yeah, because the, the two key pieces you've taken care of are zoning and parking, because we don't require parking in, in downtown. And so those have taken two big costs and uncertainties off of the table. And that's exactly what we're exploring now, which is to say, okay, is there, is there additional, is there additional need? As, as the market starts to exhibit itself, right now, most of the office market is simply trying to figure out how to continue to backfill it with office. And so we're trying to help them with that piece. But if we start to see where they're looking at other alternatives to convert, we will have to explore what would that take to actually help, much like we did with our historic buildings.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yeah, that's it. Hey, Bob, would that be also applicable? And I'm going to get to Mr. Bratton in a second. Would that also be applicable to like some of the large churches, some of those historical buildings, old churches, since we see so many now?
Yes, so we're actually, so you all, again, with your help in setting up the, the trust fund that we talked about, a couple of, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, a couple of the early interests in that are coming actually from vacant churches. Actually, you just did a rezoning here last week.
We just did that rezoning, I was just wondering.
And so, yes, I think we already are starting to see that, and you all are already starting to take action. It actually stimulates more of that opportunity. The one advantage that the churches have over many of the office buildings you were talking about is many of them actually qualify as historic structures.
Right.
So they're able to qualify for the historic tax credits, just like our older buildings did when we did downtown redevelopment into residential. It's the newer kind of, you know, 1980s, 90s and above office buildings that are really having the most difficult time. They're single-purpose built, they're not historic, so they don't qualify for those extra credits. They're actually still being marketed, and I think all of the owners would tell you they still desire those to be office buildings at this point. So it really, in those cases, are trying to just support that, that market. But absolutely, the churches. But absolutely, the churches represent an opportunity to see conversions into residential. We're starting to see more of that picking up.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what it happened to religion, but it's so many out there now that.
There are a lot of vacant churches in our community.
That are vacant, it's just crazy. I just have one more, and then, and I will. Mr. Braden, you may or may not know the answer to this, but new construction, whatever, construction, development, do you know if it's local developers or, I mean, not that it matters, but I'm always curious, are we getting a lot more interest locally as opposed to outside of the city, you know, developers coming from other states, other cities, et cetera?
I want to be careful answering that, because I know that some of the apartment developers are from outside the area. Some of your single family folks are from this area, so you just have a, you have a mix.
Okay, I was just curious how that was trending.
Yeah, you have a mix. We notice that there's a lot of apartments that either being purchased or built by folks outside the area. But that's because they have the funding to do so.
They have the funding, yeah, okay. I was just wondering, I'd love to see us get some developers here in the city, you know, spend that kind of money. Go ahead, Ms. Menlo.
Yeah, I'm just going to piggyback on the church piece. When you was talking about that, it came to my mind when Bob was mentioning working with the economic development and working with others outside. Do we, or do we have any plans, or can we, I should say, work with some of these vacant church, those that own them, that are starting to fall apart, that are becoming blighted, to see if maybe they do have an interest in it that they are not aware of?
Yeah.
Just holding on to it and doing nothing with it?
Yeah, that's actually how the one that Isabel Thornton was here with was exactly that scenario, where you had an existing congregation that had simply kind of exhausted their ability to be able to sustain that building, and it was a reach out to them that then ultimately went to the land bank and an internal conversation. And so, yeah, we're a part of that. It seems right now, most of those congregations that are doing that are reaching out to developers within the community to see if there's an interest in actually doing, and then developers actually reach out to us to kind of talk about what packages are available with it. So, yeah, I think that's starting to happen.
Yeah, I'm thinking more along the, that's not to cut you off, I'm thinking more along the lines of the churches that are vacant now, where there is no congregation and the church is just left there, and there is no membership, no attendance, no anything, and vines are now taking over to be the attendants.
Yeah, we, you know, and a couple of those, particularly the ones that have caught interest of developers, there's the Baptist Church here in downtown that was purchased by a local, a local company, a local individual, who's interested, and it was vacant. It wasn't a congregation looking to relocate, it was, it was already vacant. But, yeah, we have not, we've really not had any kind of focused attention on truly vacant churches, that there is no congregation, that is owned by someone. Part, in the past, there wasn't much of a market to backfill those, because they were always trying to sell them to the next church. Now that I think we're getting some of these residential projects coming in to kind of show the possibilities, I think there may be some more options.
And I just say that before it gets to be such in a dialect state, and then it's not going to be cost prohibitive to do anything with it other than demolish them. So that's why I was asking if the city's in that position.
Yeah, and the other advantage also, I mean, again, I hate to see, you know, what were, you know, 100-year-old churches that were congregations of worshippers end, but when they do, you know, those are, those, when those projects are converted into residential, not only do they provide in most cases additional affordable housing in our community, they're also taxable at that point, and so they also start helping to pay for those services that are, that are there. So there are multiple advantages, including avoiding blight as they remain derelict.
And I just see bringing more community back where it is, because you have people in the community that can move into that type of housing than leaving, than leaving the neighborhood and going into a nursing home or something.
There are quite a few churches that are vacant.
I mean, quite a few, and I just think it's another way of strengthening the neighborhoods throughout that.
Yeah, especially that big one on Leve and Melrose.
Exactly.
It really looks like an apartment building already. You know which one I'm referring to?
Yeah, I didn't want to call that without, but yes. That's what I said.
Yeah, the biggest challenge in redeveloping churches is actually the sanctuary, because even if you, if you qualify for historic tax credits, the sanctuary has to, basically, you have to have the ability that in some point in the future, that facility could go back to its historic use, which typically means the sanctuaries remain sanctuaries, and that's a very difficult. So some of them are actually converting the, you know, the Sunday School classrooms and those kinds of things into the apartments, and then actually turning around and renting the sanctuary back to congregations who couldn't pay to support the whole building.
Using it as a community center or something.
Yeah, because it, and, you know, so you have to have enough space in addition to the sanctuary to make it worth doing with it, because you also have to still outfit the sanctuary as well. But that's been one of the largest impediments, is a lot of these churches have very large congregations, so they have very large sanctuaries.
Very interesting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
I'll start. I have three categories of questions, I can work from least to most important, and so.
I may have to get back to you.
I'm going to start with appeals, just looking at the graph for this past year. The real estate appeals, 213 to 344. Did you notice something significant and where that large increase was from? I mean, I know we saw maybe, as a new homeowner, a slightly larger increase than I was hoping to see in my valuation, but were there any other arguments or means? And then, further, if someone owns multiple pieces of property or land, is each of these lodged in this number as an individual appeal?
They are in there as individual appeals, and it's not unheard of that you'll get more appeals as you have higher increases or increases. And then the other thing that's playing a part in here is we have 40,000 notices go out, I think the previous year, I'd have to get back to you on that, but I'm probably guessing it was around 35,000. So when you start to go send more notices out, more people appeal. And we advertise it, I mean, we're not, we're not running from anything, we want people to come in, if they don't feel comfortable about their value, we encourage them. So a lot of times, we'll get on the phone, and especially during a year like last year, you'll just encourage them, say, if you feel like, you know, you encourage them to go ahead and appeal it, just so you can answer that question and make sure they feel comfortable about where their values are.
So do you know if this large increase was a lot of individuals owning individual properties, or was it anyone owning multiple pieces of property, maybe appealing all of the assessments on what's there?
We do have some folks that come in and appeal that way. I'd have to get back to you on a breakdown. We do have a breakdown in the office, but I don't have that in front of me, so we can get back to you.
You're going to end up giving me a similar answer for my third question, but I'll move into my second one. The second one is on commercial properties. This relates to the question that Councilman Volason had asked, and I think I got a partial answer. So it notes in here that the overall increase was 4.1% in the assessments, and then the numbers that you're providing when you went by category said that the assessments went up for like hotels, 7.8, restaurants, 8.4, downtown, 4.2, and industrial, 6.9. All those are over 4.1, so which categories are below 4.1?
Those are highlights, and a lot of your categories that would be below 4.1, some folks just got a land increase, and a land increase as a proportion of the total represented a lower rate, so.
So thank you for leading me into my third question, which is where I'd go with this. So the land increase and as this thought connects to the blighted and derelict properties truly that we have throughout the city of Roanoke. So, you know, I'll just speak from my own numbers. From evaluation from last year, you know, I know my improvement value went up about 12%, and it looks like my land value went up about 20%. And I know it's different for everyone in different parts of the city, but when I see an increase of like 4.1% for commercial, that gives me concern that their improvement value really is not increasing that much, and that they're really basing it just on the land. So is, are these commercial properties maybe not that are investing and improving their properties? Are we seeing a larger number that are just, you know, letting them be as they stay in current hands? And I have more questions in this category.
Okay, well, so residential is a little bit different. You use a sales comparison approach. In the commercial, on the commercial side, use a sales comparison approach, the income approach, and the cost approach. What we do with the commercial side of it is that those things play themselves out as far as how we value property, and we reconcile that. So a lot of times, you don't have the data to, in order to implement the increase based on, based on the income, or based on the cost, or based on, on sales. So you have to, you know, stay, in a, in a, in a community, you don't necessarily want your commercial property turning over that much. Typically, you know, there's a vacancy, acceptable vacancy period, and things like that that we apply. So the, I guess the aspects of commercial are applied differently than residential. And so there's a little bit more measured approach, but, you know, I can tell you that that we tip, we are as aggressive as anybody in getting that data. I mean, so if it dictates it, you know, it'll play itself out. That's one of the reasons why we highlighted the ones that we did. It's just post-pandemic, you're starting to see a return to normalcy, and those were some of the areas that we addressed almost immediately, when you think about hotels and restaurants. And at that time, industrial was really taking off, but now industrial, industrial while supply, you know, while activity is down, you know, sales prices are up, so we're addressing that as well. It's just, and it's, I think we talked, Peter was talking about office space. Office is a bigger challenge post-pandemic, just because the power is in the tenant, the tenant is going to want to renegotiate terms that maybe provide a COVID clause. I mean, so there's some things there that really have us being a little bit more measured, but, and we typically, we follow the data, so if it's, if it's an opportunity to be aggressive, we'll get there.
Well, with that, turning to the residential piece of it, you know, we have a number of properties in Roanoke that are blighted, that are frankly falling apart. And I understand from just gleaning, looking at valuations through GIS, you'll typically see a land valuation that continues to increase, but once someone's home has fallen into a disrepair, is boarded up, is face to fire, that improvement value stays stagnant for years and years. And I understand that, you know, the improvement value itself has not increased, but that particular property without being improved arguably has a larger strain on resources for the city than the other properties that are around it. And so years ago, I understand the General Assembly gave the city of Roanoke the authority to evaluate its assessment on taxes for land value separately from its assessment, and currently, we keep it at the same rate, and I'm not looking at changing it at this moment. But I am interested in it as a topic, and how it could be used as a tool to really hold these properties maybe more accountable for what resources and burden they place on the city despite not being improved in any way. And we have a number of them that, as I look through LAS, and I know where the plots are from driving, their value does not increase unless it is their land value that increases, and it's at a much faster rate, it's just such a lower value overall and percentage-wise, it doesn't pull back into a revenue. And I know we're going to get into this in our next presentation, this is like our largest source of revenue for which we budget for the city of Roanoke. We really need to find a way with which we can hold these properties accountable so that they're paying their fair share for the services they use.
And it's one of the reasons why we don't hold up on increasing the land. So, I mean, it's, we're doing the best we can. As far as what, you know, you guys tell us what to do, we'll do it. If you want to change, if you have the ability to do that through the General Assembly, that's going to be called in, you know, but.
Well, we already have the authority, it's in the city of Roanoke, we've never implemented it. But I would ask maybe in the future going forward, I'd love to see a breakdown in how our valuations change in land value versus the improvement itself, because I know that changes in different parts of the city, but the land value seems to be going at a much faster rate than our improvements do. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think one of the other, and I suspect not many places, if any, in Virginia have taken advantage of that, and one of the challenges, I think, is, if I understand it correctly, much like our assessments, so assessments are done at scale, so they're mass appraisals, I mean, so they're, you're assessing a class of property in a neighborhood, and so if you were to change the rate, say, for example, on land, you'd have to have some kind of uniform way in which to approach that versus selecting kind of the blighted properties and having a differential on that piece of it. I suspect that's one of the reasons why not many have tackled that, but it would be, it definitely would be easy to show, I think, the data to show how the land values are increasing differently than the improvement values. And you're correct, I mean, when you've got a property that's, you know, got a $15,000 house on it, and it's not increasing because it's derelict, we have to continue to send code enforcement out because people are breaking into it, the neighborhoods are having to deal with the issue, and then ultimately, it burns down, we have to send fire department out into that area. All of those are costs, and in many instances, in some instances, those individuals aren't paying their taxes, and so we have to continue to actually pursue them to get those taxes paid, so that does continue. Now, we have with the help of the city attorney's office and a couple of the really egregious ones, and we talked about this, with the land bank, if they're not paying their taxes for an extended period of time, then we will intervene in those instances with the special commissioner and get that property into the hands of the land bank so that we can put it, can put it back to productive use.
To me, the next step is data. No one changes tax code in their first year on council, but with the right information, maybe in the coming years ahead, this is something that we can study and look at.
I'd like to have that conversation with you. I mean, we can, we certainly can pull the data for you to look at it, we'd be happy to do that. I guess, you know, if Bob, if he gives us some direction, we can do that, basically.
And I can even wait till after y'all finish this season, because I know it's busy now. Thank you.
Just a couple of follow-up things. You talked about properties that were coming online, you mentioned the several developments.
Wilton, Kingswalk, and Mountain Brook Villas.
Yeah, and then you talked about the units on 460. Do you have a running list of that that you can share?
We, yeah, we can get you a running list of that.
I'd be curious to see that.
I think, Bob, would you want to, you have that, you have a list, too, would you want us to?
Probably out of planning and development, they have between two.
We can get you the list that we have.
Well, it kind of ties in with my second question, which is, you talked about, when Councilman Volason asked about, you know, values going up, and questions around market value and what's happening in the market, that sales were down, you talked about inventory being down. At the same time, we're trying to increase inventory for affordable housing units, and we're kind of in this tension because we're looking at what can be built new, what can be rehabilitated, and what can be repurposed. And this might also cross over with brownfield development. Do you have any wisdom for us on how we can look at that to be as effective as possible based on what you're seeing in current assessed values with residential properties?
When you say, are you talking about programs, or are you talking about how we can go about doing that as far as?
How we can increase our inventory of affordable housing with the variables that are affected by the market and what you're seeing in assessed values and what you're seeing coming online. It's kind of a bigger question than maybe you might be prepared to answer today, but I.
I guess, I guess for me, it's all market-driven. I mean, it's going to be, you know, dictated by the market. I think somebody was, we were talking about having developers come in. I mean, you know, what kind of programs can you do, use to incentivize developers to come in and do property, take blighted homes and return them back to use? I mean, those are, those are questions for the public, I mean, and you can, you can build a program around it and work towards that end. I just, I think that everything is based on, you know, the incentives, I mean, that are available to developers. One of the things that, you know, we tend to do is when we're out in the field, we interview with these, these folks and talk with them about what their needs are, you know, maybe there's a bigger, greater conversation to be had, but that's probably not something that, you know, can happen overnight. But I think if you bring the right people in the room, we can tell you, we can benchmark things for you and let you know what the values are, what they potentially could be in some of these neighborhoods, and maybe that's one of the ways where we're trying to be more of, more of help to, you know, economic development and the city management offices, just by mining our data and looking at what we have and providing support for a lot of the, a lot of the initiatives, and we want to continue to do that. So maybe that's something where you can structure through planning and economic development, and we'll help with the information. I think it's going to be a lot of different people to help play, play a role in that.
I think that would be helpful, because I think it's challenging for private developers for us to say we want affordable housing, and for them, it's more difficult because of the costs involved and the market value, unless they're getting, you know, low-income tax credits.
Yeah, and the best, you know, typically, you know, the best and most affordable, affordable housing that you can get in a community is to preserve the affordable housing that you have. And so programs like our rehabilitation rebate or tax abatement program that we have, the Healthy Homes program that we have, those are really essential, because as you just mentioned, for us to, for a private developer to come in and build new affordable housing, it almost guarantees that they're going to be pursuing a combination of state, federal, and probably local incentives in order to make that happen, because the market isn't, I mean, there wouldn't be a need for any of that if the market was providing affordable housing. So it's really, really important to be able to preserve and protect the affordable housing, the existing housing stock that we already have, so people can stay in that, in that housing, because that is, it will never be cheaper than the housing that we already have. You can't replace that.
True. The last question I have is just as you're, you know, it's nice to see new construction going back up. And what you're seeing out there, are there some particular areas where we can anticipate continuing to see increases or growth in that area?
From a new construction standpoint, what's amazing to me right now, and that's the observation I like to make, is that you do have Kingswalk, and I always do this, Mountain Brook Villas, and you have the apartments down 460, and you have Glade Creek. There's a lot of construction activity going on down in that area, and it's a lot of homes going to come online, whether it's a multifamily or just single family homes coming online in that area. And from a commercial standpoint, my background, you know, you guys know I'm in commercial, great opportunity out that way if, when those things come online for commercial development. So just, I think one of the things we can do is be strategic. Once you see that, say, you sort of like see, say, you see something, say something. When we see that trend, then you can make the argument that that's a great place to start looking at maybe some future, you know, encouraging commercial development out that way, or figuring out a way for them to play itself out. If I'm not mistaken, the 768 unit apartment building that's going out there, there are three commercial opportunities that's going to be out there as well along with that. And then you look at it, you look at the wisdom and sheets moving out there, you almost believe they had some sort of advanced notice that what was going to go. But it's really a positive sign on what's going on for 60, and particularly in the area that we have not seen a lot of development in. So those are encouraging, encouraging signs.
Thank you.
Mr. Braxton, do you know the starting price of the homes on Kingswalk by any chance?
The median sale price right now is around $450,000.
And do you know how much they started at?
I think they were, they were a little bit higher, if I'm not mistaken.
If I recall, I think the sign said 345, starting at 345.
Okay.
And then the price went up.
Well, that was during, when interest rates were down. I know they went up and then they come back down.
So that was a significant jump from when they started to where they are now.
Yes.
So over 60, 70,000 from their starting point?
Yeah. Well, the price point is still solid when you think about the median sale price in the city is 210,000. That's pretty, that's pretty good, you know, for that area. You're talking about 50, I think it's 50, 60 units potentially coming on in Kingswalk. So, you know, at that point, you know, you're starting to see some significant investment by developers, and you also see a significant investment by homeowners. I mean, that's a lot of money for, you know, a house when the average, median sale price in the city is 210,000. It's pretty good. It's positive signs.
Thank you, and we will turn to, thank you, Casey. We'll turn to the second part of this. You know, we usually, Susan used to always say, okay, Bob, we'll tell the reassessment story, but, you know, you have to then stand up there and talk about the tax piece of it, the tax revenue piece. And so we're going to do that, but we're going to expand on what we've done in the past. So similar to what we did at the, at your retreat, is as Councilmember Pretty mentioned, and you all already know, real estate is a significant part of our tax revenue, again, that allows us to provide the services that we need to, but it's only, it's only one of those. And so we wanted to walk through a similar presentation to what we gave in the retreat with updated numbers, because when Jason gave this presentation at the retreat, we didn't yet have the reassessment numbers, and we do now, and we refined those a bit further. And so that's what this is to do, is to give you an update on kind of all of the revenues. And then, of course, over the next several briefings, we'll be talking about what it is ultimately that we plan on doing with that revenue in order to meet the priorities that we've established. Jason.
Thank you, Bob. Good afternoon and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, you.
Thank you. Happy New Year, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and honorable members of City Council. My name is Jason Cromer, and I am the Revenue Analyst for the City of Roanoke with the Department of Management and Budget. Before we dive into the presentation, I'd like to provide a brief intro about myself if possible. My educational background is in management and business analytics, and my professional background is approximately 15 years within the financial industry with data forecasting and predictive analytics. I enjoy the nature of exploring data, making sense of it if I can, and then sharing it with leaders in decision-making. More importantly, I appreciate the opportunity to focus my skills on long-term and meaningful impacts that would benefit our community. In this presentation, I will walk you through some updates in the national, state, and local economies, then transition to the FY 2025 budget revenue forecast on the general fund, a breakdown of local tax agreement allocations, as well as a 10-year view on the fund's performance, and end on action steps and other considerations, including questions that you may have. To preface, I believe it's very important to spend just a quick minute on the data analysis process. This is just a basic template that I follow to support quality research and assist with developing revenue projections. The first step, the initial step of discovery, identifies the task at hand, explores what type of data is required, and asks the question such as, what methodology or technique will I use in this process? Secondly, in data preparation, this is just acquiring the relevant data, both quantitative and qualitative, to help us reach a solution. Just as, for context, the general fund last year had over 300 unique revenue sources, with each having their own unique stories behind it. Thus, to make sense of it, each source will be researched on its historical records, any external data sets, and even input from subject matter experts. Third, we'll reach the analysis step, and this is just a broad step here in which the data that is collected is explored, cleaned up from skewed or abnormalities or irrelevant information. But most importantly, it's a step where connections are identified, and at the end of it, it's where I would formulate a hypothesis or realistic assumption that could be tested using various statistical models. Four is communicate results. That's where we are, where we are here today. It's my hope and desire to provide quality results and insights that is understandable to a wide audience. And lastly, measuring effectiveness is very important as well, because as new information arrives, it may be necessary to reevaluate and improve the process in order to also improve the accuracy of the results. Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, it would be important to consider what's happening on the national scene. I gave this during the budget retreat. Slide two is a snapshot of just two among many economic indicators of how the federal environment performed and where it may be heading. If there was one word to describe the economy in 2023, it's probably resiliency. To combat inflation, the Federal Reserve increased the federal interest rate in 2023 by 100 basis points, that's one full percent, on top of the 425 basis points that it did back in 2022. As a consequence, this would and should purposely slow the economy and pad down the growth of consumer prices. Thankfully, with a strong labor market seen here also in Roanoke, wage growth, and sustained consumer spending, it all withstood those rate hikes to quell the likelihood of a massive recession. There's now a subjective probability that a short-lived or mild recession is in store for 2024 and eventually returning to regular growth pre-pandemic in FY 25 and beyond. So on this slide, the first measure is inflation-adjusted gross domestic product, known as real gross domestic product. The ideal rate is between 2 and 3%. However, according to the Congressional Budget Office's 10-year outlook, GDP growth is expected to decrease in FY, I'm sorry, decrease in calendar year 2024 as a result of the Federal Reserve's strategy to hold the federal funds rate current until potentially, as rumor has it, until mid to late 2024, which would be the beginning of our FY 25 budget cycle. And then eventually in 2025, as the economy starts to rebound slightly, we're going to see it find a right balance at 2.4% based off of projections.
Can I ask a question now?
I'm okay with that. Yes, ma'am.
So are the, the numbers that we're looking at now, are the, these are the national numbers, but are you going to tell us how that relates to us locally or relatively speaking, what it would be here?
It's, it may be too soon to provide that information.
Okay, so you're just giving us an overview of what's trending nationally?
Yes, ma'am. However, though, it's also very important to monitor how that trends nationally, because that does translate locally.
You think it trends like to what?
But I won't have exact numbers, but if you're noticing just the dips and the climbs, that's likely to flow into the local Roanoke economy as well.
Okay, I was just wondering if that, that's what the trend is looking like for us as well.
Absolutely, and there may be some also effect of that based off of what trickles down into our economy as well, just based off of what may be happening on a national side.
Okay, it's always good to know the national trends, but I'm a little bit more interested in what might be impacting us here locally.
I hear you, Ms. Whiteboyd. I'm going to get into that, though, a little bit.
Oh, really? I'm just a little bit too anxious then, huh?
Sure, absolutely. Then the next measure is unemployment. Unemployment is interesting. There's an inverse relationship, and I mentioned this during the budget retreat. The relationship exists when inflation and unemployment, they're inverse relationships. As inflation decreases, unemployment goes up and vice versa. So as inflation is decreasing, that's what we've been hearing in the news, right, to the 2% goal, unemployment is projected to increase to 4.7% nationally. And the reasonable unemployment rate is generally between 3% to 5%. So it's, it's getting close to that in 2024. Luckily, Roanoke City isn't as high or fluctuates as rapidly as the US unemployment rate does. In fact, locally, Ms. Whiteboyd, we're currently at 3.3% today in Roanoke, which is only 0.1% higher than where it was last year. So it does, it does kind of follow it, but it may not follow to that variance as, as national trends may show. All right, so going into the next slide, state and local fiscal environment. All right, so a couple of things that are happening. We have a state budget. Governor Youngkin released his proposed biennial budget on December 20th. His staff is modeling a decrease in revenue growth, 7.9% in FY 2025, and then even 2.9% in FY 2026 respectively. And if you may know or not, it's perfectly okay, the state does have different revenue sources. They're primarily funded by three revenue sources, individual income taxes, corporate taxes, and sales and use taxes. We don't, we don't collect on, on that, but sales tax does play a role in it. And his budget is proposing a shift in revenue income for the state by reducing income taxes by 12%, but raising state sales tax by 0.9%. That's just his proposal. Another item locally that's, that's of importance that I've seen is in our local sales tax of 1%. Real personal spending is slowing while consumer debt and delinquencies are rising. And I bring this up because presently FY 24 collection on local sales tax slightly dipped below our growth compared to FY 23. So year-to-date through December, sales tax this year is down 0.56%, just about half a percent. Now, that's, that's a small number, but I saw it, and that's definitely something I definitely want to watch. That's just one month of data, just December, and it's easier to stand on two legs than it is on one. So I'm waiting to see what January brings in in order to formulate if I need to make an adjustment on that forecast for local sales tax. Also, and then just going back to the state budget, if Governor Youngkin's proposal does go through with those changes that he's proposing, I don't yet know, or I'm still researching, what kind of impact that would provide to our local economy. Will folks be less likely to spend money because taxes have gone up, contributed by the state, but maybe they may have extra money to spend based off their income coming down, income tax being reduced.
Well, that's what I want to know, isn't it? At the point in time that you give that information, the impact.
Yeah, yes, sir. And then lastly, there's real estate as presented by Mr. Bratton. In 2023, Roanoke residential sales volume decreased 26.7%, while prices rose by 6.7% compared to the year prior. This tracks accordingly when examining housing inflation. For context, peak inflation was 10.6% back in June of 2022, and since that peak, depending on which indices you're looking at in Consumer Price Index, they started to fall. However, with one exception, that would be in housing. Housing inflation only began to decrease only six months ago, back in June of 2023. That's one full year before we started to see house prices drop down. So that lag is definitely there. It's moving in the right direction now, and just, again, closely monitoring that to see where that, where that drops. And just for some reference, since June of 2023, housing CPI went down by 1%, whereas if you factor in Consumer Price Index, less shelter or housing, that went down by 2% in the same time frame. So it's dropping even, it's dropping less rapidly as regular consumer price indices are dropping. So there's definitely a lag there in housing, and hopefully that would, in my opinion, go down more, but it's, it's getting there. So watching that. Now let's get into the good stuff. There's a lot of numbers here, and you've probably seen this information when Assistant City Manager Brent Robertson provides his updates, but this is going to be looking at our FY 25 preliminary forecast, just on local taxes to start off with. With the rationale of the economic conditions mentioned, we'll talk about a few of these. So real estate's going, based off of the valuation that was just recently presented, will reflect in a $7.87 million or 6.9% increase compared to the FY 24 adopted budget. This is presuming a 97% collection rate, which is very consistent with historical collection rates, going as far back as, I've looked since 2015, it's very steady 97%. Consumer utility tax historically hovers around $9 million annually. This projection has a 6.1 decrease to the FY 24 adopted budget, and it's mainly a correction, if you want to call it that, but I want to definitely monitor that over the next month just to gauge if there's any adjustment needed on that. And then, as mentioned, there's an anticipated rebound of the economy in the second half of '25, 2025, going into 2026. So thus, I have modest gains in business licenses and transient occupancy tax. Sales tax and food and beverage are consumer activities that were very vibrant in 2024, as well as a good part of 20, I'm sorry, in FY 2023 and 2024. And those strong increases do carry to a degree going into FY 2025, but again, that's still, it's still too soon to say. I want to see how holiday sales roll into that to see if there's any adjustments needed on that. So in all, just on the local tax, currently forecasting to have a 5% increase over the FY 23 budget at about $12.619 million.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a brief questions on this slide.
Okay.
Very quickly, just as a, as a source of data, as we're looking at the personal property tax and the revenue that's cited here, does that include the funds that are provided by the state to make up for the portion that's not assessed?
I believe that that's dropped into the grants and commonwealth, because that's received from the state, so it would be under non-local tax. This is just collected, but I'll, actually, hold on one second, let me just double check that before I.
I guess the, the source of what I'm trying to get at, with the amount of personal property tax that we have currently as revenue that's coming in, and the amount that we have as a sales tax that's assessed at 1%, despite any changes, let's assume that it continued at another 1% if we were to increase, would those funds even be able to make up the loss of not collecting personal property tax anymore if we assess that?
One more time, Mr. Pretty, I apologize.
Essentially, if we were to abandon the personal property tax, the car tax, and to replace it with a 1% increase in the sales tax, would we even have enough funds to make up for it? Right now, I'm seeing a three to four million dollar difference in these numbers here.
Yeah, I don't see that. I see sales tax pretty much leveling off to a degree, just based off, maybe, maybe in a couple of years, it might, but at the present moment, I, I don't see that counterbalancing and elimination of the personal property tax. That's, the personal property tax is collecting about $30 million, oh, picture, right, $32 million, and that's a, that's a huge gap to cover if you're looking at just increasing sales tax. Is that what you're going with?
Yes, yeah. Essentially, if we were to trade off, it seems like we would still be at a deficit if we were to decide to do so. And this is despite any arguments about the legality of whether or not we could be forced to abandon the, the car tax or anything along those lines, as it is in the Constitution. But right now, it seems like if we were to trade one for another, we would be at a deficit as a locality.
At the, at the present, with the present data that I have in front of me, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let's talk a little bit about, go back up to your real estate. And I think you said we, we collect about 90%?
97% historically.
Okay, so what do we do with the other seven or whatever percent for those that are delinquent? Do we allow them a payment plan of some sort, or do we aggressively go after them? Because that's money laying on the table, so to speak.
Right, that's right.
What do we do in those instances in trying to collect?
The answer to that is all of the above. So some, some inside that 97% would be folks that would otherwise be delinquent if it weren't for a payment plan. So they're, they're accounted for in that. The 3% are the folks that we have been unsuccessful in collecting, and then Evelyn will indeed, Treasury will indeed pursue collections on those. And often, we'll end up getting those in a later period of time. So the, the total collection over a period of time is probably even higher than 97%, but inside the fiscal year, we just count on that.
So on the part where she has to go after, what tools do she have in place from the city that we give her to, to be able to aggressively go after that 3%?
Part of it is, part of it is budget, because she actually uses, and Tammy, you'll have to help me here, but I think she relies a lot on both the City Attorney's Office, but also on outside council or collection agencies to assist.
Well, when it comes through our office, we've started to utilize outside council to conduct tax sales as well, plus the Treasury has a number of lien rights that are unique to the Treasury to obtain, probably has the most aggressive tools to obtain these funds that you have, anywhere in the Commonwealth.
Do you have a figure as to what that percentage is or that amount, roughly what that amount is, that 3% of people that owe money that we could be using to, to have for programs, et cetera, that we are not having now?
And I think it would be helpful if, finance will also give you historically where we stand with our peers. I think you'll find that we do an excellent job.
Okay, that would. Okay, that would be good if I could have that.
Yeah, we could get you the, the dollar amount.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to see how much money we've got still lagging out there that we could be using with things going up that we are not taking advantage of.
And there's an element of that in each of those tax categories. So there's an element of delinquency in real estate. There's an element of delinquency in personal property.
Yes, I know about, yes.
And there's even, and I'll call it delinquency, although it's not actually delinquency. I think you could go so far as to say it's, it's fraud on the, on the sales tax piece, on the trust tax piece, where there's trust tax that's actually collected at the point of sale, but never actually remitted back to the city. And so in those instances, Commonwealth Attorney gets involved in, in that pursuit as well. So, yeah, we could actually identify, probably for each of those three categories, what, I don't want to say is lost, because eventually I think we get most of that back, but it takes action and cost in there. And it's, it's, to your point, it's revenue that is, in that fiscal year, lost to apply to services that we have. And we, we can certainly get that dollar.
Yeah, I'd just be interested in knowing, because of things, as you, as you know, Bob, we've got decisions to make now. And it may just be a ripple in the water, but it's still money that's owed that the other taxpayers, that's, that's on the backs of other taxpayers.
Absolutely.
And I just think we need to look at what are we leaving behind? And how do we go after that money?
Absolutely, Ms. Moon Reynolds. And to answer your question, what percentage is left on the table, dollar amount? If I was just looking at FY 2024, just on the projections, you're looking at about $5.5 million.
See, that's money. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into non-local taxes. Non-local taxes is showing approximately, just based off of forecast, 6.7% increase. It's the second line on the bottom there of about $7.035 million above FY 2024. A couple of callouts on this one. I do want to state, as in permits fees and licenses, that's expected to grow due to inspection fees and building plan review fees that are presently surpassing their targets. As mentioned, we talked, Mr. Branton mentioned the increase in new construction. So we got that in, in play. And then there may be some other things too that I'll touch upon. So that growth is somewhat modeled in, within, not only that, but also with an anticipated reduction in bank loan rates and any new construction activity that's going to move into 2024, 2025. Another thing to mention is due to the timing of the governor's budget announcement, grants and aid in Commonwealth is under review. FY 2023 saw a spike of 9.9% over two years prior in, I'm sorry, in FY 2022. Thus, I modeled a conservative 4.3% increase over the FY 23 year-end numbers. I didn't want to go over zealous with a nine, almost 10% jump there. So I just went on a conservative basis. That may change as well, as I mentioned earlier, with the, the state budget. Charges for services have steadily increased year-over-year since FY 2020. This one is showing a lift of about 6.5%, primarily due to the school share of CSA, and to a lesser degree from other sources such as off-duty billings from police and fire EMS service charges. Grand total, when combining the two, we're looking at about a 5.5% increase or $19,655,000. Now, that's not, that's not all that the general fund would receive, because as you know, we have two agreements by formula that are shared on local tax revenue. Roanoke City Public Schools is 40%. And Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge is 3/8 of a percent of transient occupancy tax. Slide six here is showing a breakdown comparison between FY 2024 and the preliminary FY 2025 projection, as mentioned earlier. So that first section there is the summary of the previous two slides. There is, with the growth, Roanoke City Public Schools would be receiving, just based off of these estimates, of just a little north of $108 million. And Visit Virginia Blue Ridge would top over the $2 million market, $2,490,000. So with those agreements removed, the total general fund would have an increase just under $13 million at $12,922.29, or roughly a 5.1% increase when those factors are considered. This slide, I showed, I showed this in the budget retreat. So there's value in zooming out and examining how the general fund matches up to previous years. So and on this slide is a chart of the 10-year historical year-over-year growth represented by the yellow line. Pre-COVID, we were looking at an average of about 2.7% growth. So we could see post-pandemic now in 2022 and 2023, that, that shot up through the roof there, reaching nearly 7% in FY 2023. And then in FY 2024, even with those projections in place, that's pointing at a 5.2% growth, still in the right direction as far as growth goes, but it is, it is calming down. As I mentioned, the, the federal economy, the local economy, we're seeing the effects of monetary policies by the Federal Reserve. That's, that's a main driver of it in, in their combat against inflation. And then FY 2025, still positive growth, but again, it's, it's diminishing, right? It's at 2.3% today, based off of the, the, the scenarios that I provided. And then also on this slide is a red line representing the value of the US dollar today compared to $2015. So while the last two columns are only projections, I really can only speak about inflation dollars today. Inflation has degraded the dollar significantly, but significantly by almost 23%. So in other words, $100 today equates to about $77.19 back in 2015. So we're seeing how much inflation has drove down the value of the dollar since that time. And it's starting to taper off, but it's, again, it's hard to tell and read the future. But that's, that's all that projection.
And we've, we've mentioned this several times as we've gone through the impact that inflation is having on the, so even as we're seeing this increase in value, just looking at what Jason just shared with you, basically, the, the money that we're projecting to have to fund our services is of the same value as it was six years ago. And if you can just imagine what has, how things have increased in cost in those six years, just think of the salary increases that we've done for public safety, as well as our general employees, and they're not the same. And so, you know, arguably, even as our revenue increases, we continue to lose ground as a result of inflation. We're not unique in that regard. It's just one of the things we have to keep kind of reminding folks and keeping in mind as we develop the, the budget for the upcoming year that, thank goodness, that the values are increasing, that indeed we are seeing economic activity, because that growth is what's allowing us to at least not lose ground. But even though we're seeing those revenue increases, we're not really keeping, we're, we're just keeping pace with inflation, not really exceeding in any way.
Bob, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So when we're looking at our CIP projects, and, and you're, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, and Jason, you, you, you kind of got one, because you're really good.
Thank you.
But, but we don't. So are you using those historical numbers to calculate the CIP project so that we're not in a predicament like we are with one of our capital improvement projects?
Yeah, so what we do is, they're actually, as they create estimates for the capital projects, they're basing those estimates on a couple of different things. One of those are historical trends. One of those is, there's a whole series of indices that are created across the country that show the increase in construction costs, the increase in steel prices, all those kinds of things. So they're factoring that in. And then they're actually using real bids. So bids that we've been getting in, they're evaluating those and saying we need to make those adjustments. What's happening, and you all know, I've said this before, is that even as regular inflation continues to increase, the inflation of the products and services that we're purchasing are doing so at a significantly higher amount. Steel is an example. We've used this with the Main Street Bridge, for example.
Right, 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 right. That's what I was alluding to.
The cost of steel in the Main Street Bridge alone, right now, is actually the same cost as the entire Franklin Road Bridge, just in steel. And we didn't build the Franklin Road Bridge that long ago. And so, so yes, what we're actually seeing is even with all of those ways in which we're doing the estimates, the inflation is just growing so fast in those categories that it's outpacing even those projections as we move in. And so what we're doing now is we're doing all of that that I just mentioned, and we're adding kind of a, even a multiplier to it, just to say, hey, we've got to assume that these are going to increase. And of course, the result, as you all know, is that means less projects can go into our capital program, because the individual projects are costing more.
Put that cushion in there. I was just wondering, so that we're not caught in a predicament like we are with the, with the bridge. So, so you're already doing those things, so there was nothing that you could have done to kind of?
Yeah, the bridge, I think, was a, both a combination of the long period of time it took for us to get all of the approvals we needed from the railroad and others, because that stretched that out over a couple of years. And it happened during that couple of years to be a period where steel prices were just going, going crazy.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was nothing you could have done, because I know people are saying, well, didn't you know that was happening? Or couldn't you see the trend, even though you don't have a crystal ball?
And then, and I'll give you an example, and you all know this, because we've, we've shared this with you, is we were, as we're negotiating the final contract for the bridge, we were contemplating and asked for a 30-day, 30-day extension of what the bid was. And the contractor was only willing to do that if we would assume the risk of increasing prices. That's how volatile that market is right now.
Just 30 days, okay. I, I just thought I would ask the question, because, you know.
Yeah, well, and, and, you know, and somebody, and some of the staff know, I've, I've used this. I, I heard somebody refer to earlier, we've talked a lot about inflation, is, and, and Jason has talked about the rate of inflation starting to, the rate of increased inflation starting to slow, which is good. But there was this comment made that, that I heard, which was that the rate of inflation is slowing, but the weight of inflation is here to stay, which basically means these, we've reset all of our prices. So the economy has reset everything. What you pay for hamburger, what you pay for steel, what you pay for a car is now at a new price. So even though inflation is starting to decline, it is highly unlikely you're going to see those prices come back down, which is requiring us, just like every household, to kind of reset what we can do with those dollars that we have.
And you are going back to, with, with some of the CIPs that are lined up, you're going back and recalculating?
Yes.
Based on these current trends?
Yes, and that's going to, and when we come forward with the CIP, it's going to mean there are less projects in our CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Cal.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Jason.
No, that's okay. Second to, okay. Moving to the, as we approach the final slide, I do want to share that there's still some more work to do as new data is collected. Circling back to the data analysis steps earlier, there's, there's a good collection of qualitative data that, that I will be busy in the month of January, even starting as early as tomorrow, doing, for example, meeting with the Commissioner of Revenue, Ryan LaFountain, to align the forecast of personal property valuation with, with what his, him and his staff are, are doing. I'm also meeting with the City Treasurer, Evelyn Powers, for input and advice on ARPA interest revenue and her expertise with those investments, with the investments of those funds prior to being spent, as well as working with the city manager's staff. In addition, I'll be meeting with Planning Director Chris Chittam and his staff regarding revenues collected on permits, fees, and licenses. I want to ensure that revenues collected on those are being accurately captured based on the timeline of projects that are expected in the upcoming years, such as we have Riverdale, potentially Amazon, and any other construction activities. Sales tax, as mentioned, I already went into that, as far as it dipping down by about half a percent. But I do want to see, again, January collection to, to see if that trend is going to continue. And lastly, with the proposed budget, I'm still poring over the details of, of the impacts on revenues. For example, just looking at it, just right before the holidays, I saw no increase to F9, 599 law enforcement. However, the General Assembly convenes next week, and there may be budget amendments proposed that could change our preliminary forecast. And all of these factors are acknowledged to account for sensitivity in the revenue assumptions. So as, as new data is received and major impacts, if any, to revenue updates are done, those updates will be provided as needed.
And the good thing is, with us doing, we've not had revenue projections this soon in the budgeting process. And with Jason's work and Brent's work, we've been able to get to this point. And so even while Jason is doing that, all of those items that he just mentioned in refining that, this allows us to actually fix a number. So we're going to, we're going to fix a revenue number and say that's what we're building the budget off of. Whereas in the past, we've been kind of building the budget at the same time we're trying to forecast revenues. And so that has created a lot of volatility. And this will allow us now, obviously, as Jason's doing his refining, if something comes back in a negative sense, then we'll have to downsize what we're doing. Something comes back in positive, we'll be able to kind of set that aside while we, while we fix the rest of the budget as we move forward. So, so this will allow us, I think, to more quickly move to some of the larger policy discussions regarding things around compensation and CIP and those kinds of things than we've been able to in the past.
And if I may, just one more minute in, in closing thoughts. Predictions are seldom precise, and every forecast is dependent and contingent upon specific assumptions. So I began this presentation with the word of the year, right, resiliency. However, in my course of research, I'm constantly seeing a trend in news to suggest growth will still occur, but just to a lesser degree. And I can only speculate that the best word to describe 2024 will be normalcy. And the growth that we've seen in the past, I, I think those are in our rearview mirror as we approach this, and you probably heard this term before, the new normal. And just like what Bob mentioned, that the prices are going to be here, the, the weight of them. So I thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions you may have.
I have a question for the manager on the other considerations. And I know we on time here. Under the, I know, yes, I'm looking at the clock too. I got a dog I got to get home to. This is for the manager, I guess, under the other revenues. Where you have planning and building to identify drivers in construction projects on permits, fees, and licenses, what does that mean? Because I have a question.
Yeah, that's if, if we're, kind of the same question you asked Casey, was what might be out there on the horizon? So you all know that we're, both on our economic development side and planning side, we're regularly in conversation with prospective developers and builders in the community. And so some of those are just speculative. They're just trying to feel out, is there a market? Some of those really appear to have kind of real legs under them. Those are the ones that Jason's wanting to make certain that he's aware of, because if something significant was underway that was going to represent a major investment, that could change those permit numbers. Obviously, one of the most recent examples was when you build a $400 million hospital expansion, that generates significant fees. If we hadn't known that, we wouldn't be able to project forward. So something like that came forward. So that's what they're looking for.
Well, I, because I was just, what came to my mind was the small business developers, the ones who are doing the small projects, such as, a good example is, what I was impressed with was the one that was done up on Melrose, where we have, I think it's a community center, LH Hamler Properties. I passed by there going to church. And so I look at those kinds of projects of, from small developers, and I just think those are good for the city to have the smaller ones, as well as the larger ones. But I also look at, and in those small projects, and looking at the building department permits, et cetera, we looking at being more open-minded to keep those projects from leaving the city and going into the county or, or the town of Benton, and looking at more being a problem solver than being a more of a, just a, just a no, we can't do it, or looking at what we can do.
Yeah.
And to increase those, those revenues, to bring them back into the city.
Yeah, I think we, you know, that is part of the discussions and part of the support you all have provided in the various zoning reforms that we've taken, so that we don't have to have conversations about whether or not a zoning has to take place, because you've already approved that, that part of it. We'll be coming forward in the next couple of months with a whole nother package of zoning reforms that actually are intended to make some of those development hurdles even lower, if you will, and, and more by right. So, so yes, I mean, those are definitely a part of what goes on. Economic development is also in constant conversation with businesses. There's, for example, there's a small business right now that we know that's looking to expand into a building adjacent to them. They're confronted with some remodeling costs. Fairly small business, but still significant in that area. And so economic development's meeting with them to see if some of their facade grants would actually aid in that, in that regard. So, so yes, those are always ongoing conversations. Building code were kind of fixed. I mean, the building code's set by the state.
Right.
So there's not a whole lot you can do with, with that piece of it. But definitely, as far as zoning and as far as the assistance that economic development can offer, absolutely.
But just even in the building code, even though it's fixed, I think improving on, as we talked about earlier, with the gun violence piece, communication, I think better customer service than just coming outright with a no, but trying to be more of a problem solver.
Sure.
That kind of thing, I think.
Yeah, and I certainly hope that rarely do we have just a straight-out no, unless there absolutely is, obviously, a violation in the code. But, but absolutely, a piece of, piece of whatever you can do to help folks secure, you know, what they're seeking to do is what you're, you're wanting to try to do.
That's what I would, I would like to see.
And even to some degree, that's part of the conversation you all will be having with the, with the design guidelines. Now, those are residential projects, but, you know, the design guidelines have, often drive the staff to having to provide a no answer, because there isn't an alternative. You either meet those guidelines or you don't. And so sometimes it requires a policy change with it. Other times, it's just a matter of which we do customer service and so with it, so, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. I was just going to follow up on the comment that the, earlier was noted about the 599 funding. The, the introduced budget does violate state law, because it does not include any increase in 599 funding for a local law enforcement. So we'll either have to make up some increase locally, but I largely suspect our delegation will be seeking replacing those funds in the budget from the General Assembly.
All right. Thank you, David.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. Happy New Year. Thank you, Mayor. And that concludes our first budget briefing of the year. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we now move to items that are recommended for action. Uh, there's an acceptance of a donation from the Moose Lodge of Vinton for the Police Department's reset program. Uh, there's a resolution.
Move the second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution accepting a donation from the Moose Lodge of Vinton to be applied to Roanoke City Police Department's reset program to support box fit.
All right. Uh, any discussion by members of council?
Uh, I just have a comment there if I could.
Although it's not mentioned in the resolution, but I would ask if, unless council has an objection to it, if the clerk could express a serious appreciation to the Moose Lodge, uh, on behalf of the council for the generous donation, if you could do that, I think it would be a good thing. Usually it's mentioned in the, uh, measure, but I didn't see it in this one.
Yeah, it's definitely very generous.
Yeah.
Part, I think they actually saw some of the work that was going on there, felt it was worth supporting, and they, and they did so.
So I think it'd be nice to just say thank you. Yes.
All right, sure, note if we pass that on.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? Madam Clerk, please hold over.
All right. Ms. Sanchez Jones, Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Moose Lodge of Vinton, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023, 2024 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. I will be the acceptance of the FY 2024, uh, federal fiscal year Balance Against Women Act, uh, v. Stop Grant. Uh, there's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the 2024 v. Stop Grant made to the City of Roanoke by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council?
I just have a question. Um, with regards to this grant for this specialist, is this a permanent position or is this?
We, we treat it as a permanent position. So this actually goes back to the question the mayor asked of the chief earlier, which is do we still have a team dedicated inside the police department to domestic violence? This is one of those positions. So we treat it as permanent. This source of funding is technically an annually applied for grant associated, and I suppose at some point they could stop doing it, but then we would just fund it out of general funds. So yes, we, we definitely treat it as.
But the position itself is permanent and, okay, thank you.
That's not the only position.
That is correct. It's not the only, there, there are actually a couple of different positions, and, uh, chief mentioned that one of those positions with a new hire is bilingual, uh, which has been one of the gaps that we've had also. Um, so one of the folks now is Spanish-speaking, able to help serve that part of the community even, even more so. But yes, there are more than one position, and actually, there's more than one grant that funds these positions also.
All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Uh, there's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the Virginia Services Training Officers Prosecution v. Stop Formula Grant Program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023, 2024 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among councilmen? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, we're now, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments you'd like to have.
No comments other than welcome to 2024. So thank you.
All right, uh, city attorney, none here. Uh, reports of committees, none. Unfinished business, none. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, none. Motion, miscellaneous business inquiry of the comments by the mayor and the members of council. I just, Mr. Pretty.
If you want me to go first? Uh, uh, two quick things. First one, similar to something I brought up last year. I know we're not going to be covering the, whether or not the, um, position of the Main Street Bridge in Mossina is coming down until the next meeting. That's, that's what I've covered. Uh, but just for us to be fully aware, as it relates to a precinct in Old Southwest where there could be considerable transportation issues in either June or November with that bridge being taken down, just that we stay in connection with the Electoral Board and fully on top of any matters as it may relate to there, because any changes related to precincts have to be at least like 40 day, 45 days at least or more before voting even begins. So just starting the clock now on that. Uh, and then, um, secondly, I know there's, there's been some media that's, uh, reported on, uh, positions of, uh, other members of council and the mayor, whether or not they may be intending to seek reelection. But I just want to say thank you for the one year that I have served with those members,